I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please stand for the President of the meeting.
Reverend Duster, will you be it?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Board has been meeting in closed session. Item 3.1, conference with labor negotiator, no action. Item 3.2, personnel, no action. Consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be approved with one motion, which is not debatable and requires a unanimous vote for passage. If any member of the Board, superintendent, or the public so requests, items may be removed from this section and placed in the regular order of business following the approval of the consent agenda. Is there any desire to remove anything from the consent agenda? Do we have any speakers on that? Okay. All right. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All right. The second was...
First or second?
Ms. Stolen?
Yes.
Ms. Prophet?
Yes.
Ms. Stu Dexter?
Yes.
Ms. Freyler?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. All right. 6.1, communications and reports. This portion of the meeting is set aside for the purpose of allowing an opportunity for individuals to address the Board representing matters not on the agenda. The Board is not allowed to take action on any items which is not on the agenda except as authorized by government code section 54954.2. Request forms for this purpose are located at the entrance to the meeting room. Request forms are to be submitted to the Board prior to the start of the meeting. Speakers are limited to three minutes each, and the Board will limit the total number of time for public input on each item to 20 minutes. However, in exceptional circumstances, when necessary, to ensure full opportunity for public input, the Board may... The President may, with Board consent, adjust the amount of time allowed for public input and/or the time allotted to each speaker. So we have how many? About 10 here? Okay, so we have about 10, so it's gonna be more than 20 minutes. Sorry, the Board are paying attention to all speakers. Okay? This does not pay anywhere. All right, we'll try that. Okay, before we do this, I want to make a statement to everyone who's speaking. We have had quite a few controversial issues coming before the Board, and we are very happy to hear everybody's input. I do ask that the speakers and the audience be respectful to everybody who's speaking. If there are outbursts during anybody who's speaking, I don't care what side you're on, if I agree or disagree, I will pound the gavel, give a warning to that person speaking out in the audience, and then a second warning, you will be asked to leave the meeting. I think that's fair to everybody, because we do want to hear from everybody, and we are very interested in everybody's input. Okay. I do have one public comment that came in. The Board received a written comment from a public. It will not be read out loud, but will be made part of the record, and everyone will get a copy of this right now. All right. All right, we're all set. Jeffrey Karen. And I will keep everyone to their three minutes. I will just say thank you and ask you to sit down after three minutes mark, so pay attention to the lights.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Board. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm here simply to bring attention to the fact that we've had some pretty outlandish stuff that's been coming to the news and the media. We've had a lot of really grotesque things that are coming out. Project Veritas has exposed some rather frightening things. And so, not here to stir the pot, I'm just simply here to make sure that the Board is aware of the fact that a large number of citizens and a large number of constituents in the community do not agree with the things that Mr. Tennant was saying. I think that there's a lot of parents that are truly concerned about the fact that the landing spot can be brought back, and until we can assure that this is gonna be handled the way that the constituents believe, which is, I mean, obvious that a large majority agree that he shouldn't be allowed back on campus, I'm just simply here to reiterate that. I'm just here to bring it to the attention of the things that were said, and I think that a lot of people are on board with us. So, I'm not here to attack anybody, I'm not here to be loud or boisterous or anything like that or flamboyant, simply just trying to get to the point. I, as a parent, as a concerned citizen, somebody with school-aged children, it was incredibly frightening to hear some of the things that I heard Casey saying on this Project Veritas video in regards to what were going on in the wellness centers. And I think what really is scary is about the fact that we don't know what kind of background this gentleman has. From what I've been looking into, there was no real background checks done on this gentleman. I mean, I know to go to a field trip with my children, I'm required to do a live scan, I'm required to have a background check, to be anywhere near kids, to be on a campus, even if I want to go volunteer on a campus, there has to be a background check done. So I think, to go forward, as a member of this community, I would like to see the Board or whoever's involved at the schools in future events where we're bringing on people that are gonna be influencing children, or they're gonna be around children, that we have a misunderstanding. The parents and the community need to be aware of who's being brought on campus, and the influence, and how close they're gonna be to your kids. I mean, we can all agree that mental health is a really, really... It's a problem right now in society, there's a lot of issues with mental health. So I can agree, as a parent, that I have no issues with having funding going towards mental health. There are definitely... I have no argument, I believe all children should have somewhere to go to talk about their problems, but as a person who doesn't necessarily agree with what Casey does, I don't feel that people like me and my children would have a safe place. When I go on campus and I see the flags that are being flown in regards to, it's scary. So I just want to let you guys know, safe places work for all children, and schools are supposed to be safe places for everybody, regardless of race, religion, ethnicity, whatever. So just as a concerned parent and a member of the community, I just want to bring that to the Board and let you guys know in a peaceful play way, that I would appreciate if you guys could hold that standard for the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff. All right, Gus Murphy and...
I'm alone.
Yeah, I know. You know, you're... I was on deck here. I got some doctors here who used to... Is it Nike? Meekie? Alvin Aldo.
Mike.
Mike. Is that a Mike?
That's Michael.
It's M-E-I-K-E.
That's because the things that you put over there don't work.
All right, we'll blink a pen. All right, Gus.
My name is Gus Murphy, I have two children in Western Placer Unified School District. I wrote on my sheet that I want to talk about the California Teachers Association. I talk about them a lot, because I think they've graduated from labor union to church, and I'll explain what I mean. They kinda fit the definition. The California Teachers Association puts money in the pot every month, they have a set of ideologies that they bring to the table, and certainly a sense of community. "We are CTA!" Everywhere you look, so, sorry, I yelled, that was not at anybody. But, you know, and they will call names, and they will defend with everything they have against anybody who would threaten those very ideologies. To me, that's a church, that's not a labor union. It's supposed to be about how many children in the classroom, fair wages, good working conditions. Not to mention, they got masking children way wrong, and they got forcing the vaccination on kids way, way wrong. So you think that those are the people that I'm gonna let drive the bus when it comes to my child's mental health? Uh-uh, no way. I won't let it happen. And I also want to mention that there is a very big gray area between banning books and not having them as curriculum. And at the heart of all of this, and what Jeffrey just talked about, is that it's one thing... I'll just put it simply, religion does not belong in the classroom. I think we were all okay with that, we knew that belonged in the living room, because it's an ideology. And now Reverend Tennant, if I'm not mistaken, Reverend, right, that carries some pretty religious connotations, is bringing in ideology. And now, it may not be about Jesus, it may not be about Allah, but it's certainly teaching children a way that they're supposed to look at the world. Children's brains aren't fully formed till they're in their early to mid twenties. Boys and girls reach puberty sometime typically around 10 to 12, right? And I would think you'd be hard-pressed to find someone within your district that would could stand up here and put their degree and their credentials on the line and say that a child has the cognitive ability and the aptitude to make a fully-formed decision about their sexuality at that early of an age. I doubt those parents would even let him go get a tattoo, you might regret it later, but somehow not only are we condoning it, we are helping people like Reverend Tennant come in here. Look, if parents want to teach religion to their own children, that's fine. If they want to go home and over dinner confuse their children about their gender, that's fine. When you bring it into public schools, you get to meet people like me and some of the other folks that are gonna speak tonight. And I'm happy to tell you lastly, that it took me a while to get there, but I'm back. The videos are gonna start again, and I look forward to bringing plaster together to fight this. Thank you.
Mike, you're up, and Mike Murray's on deck.
Good evening, Board. To touch on what Madam President said to start the meeting off, I'm here tonight to speak on the lack of respect and decorum recently from some of the community members, teachers, and parents in the audience during Board meetings. At the emergency Board meeting, there was a man, and I will not say his name, some of us know him, screamed at Board Member Prophet as she was speaking. He yelled out calling her a racist a-hole, I'm not gonna use the word, there's children present, so she is far from that, okay? She's married to a man who's Mexican. I'm a good friend of hers, and I'm also Hispanic, okay? I have never, and I repeat, never, ever heard her say anything that would be deemed as racist. To throw that word out there without knowing someone is ignorant, and at the same time it is also defamation of character by legal definition. Her reputation and integrity have been damaged because of it, and it stops now. These Board members were elected by all of us, so we need to work together to get things done, not tear them down. If you don't like something, bring your facts, not your feelings, and speak to them on it. These meetings are not for anyone yelling, screaming out vulgarities in the presence of children, or anyone else for that matter. So be respectful from this point on, show the children present that we can get through these meetings in a civilized manner. I appreciate all that you Board members do. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mike. Alicia Denoyer, on deck.
All right, thank you, I'm Mike Murray. I wanted to say thank you to this Board, under the leadership of April, George, and Marjorie, you guys have made huge strides in this district. You had one of the biggest tasks around fixing a historic worst academic-performing district when you took that seat, and you are not disappointing right now. You've put the focus on education and have worked hard to take the nonsense off campus. Don't let the bullies and loudmouths that make up a small minority of this district discourage you. They call you those names to try and hurt you, but please know the community is behind you. Thank you for fighting for the kids, thank you for fighting for the families, and thank you for fighting for education. Thank you for standing up against the bullies. Thank you for helping fix a messy district and set the students up for a good future. Thank you.
Alicia and Susan, Mark...
Mark, no.
Mark, no, you're on deck.
Hello, I'm Alicia Denoyer, I have two kids in the district. I have a couple things I'm gonna speak on, my own experience as well. First, I want to start with reading an email. My child, our family chose to opt out from the Hate U Give. I would expect that I'd be responded with an email such as, "They support me, my child will get through it," even though he chose not to read the given first-choice book. It says that his English teacher has let his curriculum support teacher know that we chose to opt out. She wants to let me know that my child will be the only student in his English class and the only student in his curriculum support class who will be reading Bless Me Ultima, the other choice. Her English... His English teacher and curriculum support will obviously do their best to support my child individually, and there's a plan to have student tutors take part in the circle with your student that don't have partners. However, it's just not the same as being part of the small group conversations that will be happening. I just wanted to make sure you have all the information when you make your decision upon opting out. I don't feel that that's the correct style to respond to a parent with. I feel it's a form of intimidation, coercion, bullying into getting my child to opt back in. I did speak with Ms. Haladin on this as well, she called me, not regarding these emails that she was fully aware of, but she called me regarding another, more smaller matter. And she did let me know that that email was sent to all the parents that chose to opt out. After reading that email, those parents then chose to opt back in, because they did not want their child to be alone or the only one. Again, coercion. Also, I'd like to speak on the landing spot as well. I'm fully vetted, live-scanned, TV-tested, I'm a room parent, and I volunteer and chaperone field trips. I was not allowed on campus to bring my child pizza at Lincoln High School, and that was at the end of the day. It would not be interrupting his class time. However, the landing spot, because they are recommended and have good reviews from other schools, were casually allowed on campus, and yet, I was not. So that's a huge concern and red flag for me. I was let know that this would not happen again, it was an oversay. I don't think that's acceptable. Also, I'd like to know, and all these two contradict each other, Carrie Callahan said that the landing spot, you guys have ceased relationship with them. Ms. Haladin's email was sent out saying that it has been paused. Two very different things.
Thank you. Susan and Cole Yonier on deck.
Hi. I'm just gonna read a few things tonight, I can't believe we're here again. I'm talking about the landing spot, and I want everyone here to write this down. Lewd and lascivious. Lascivious.
Luscivious.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Write it down. Because it's a crime. So I don't even know why we're even discussing the landing spot. All I think of, I saw the Project Veritas video, I saw their little drag show, they have a little video of their little drag show. To me, that's like a little striptease. Imagine if those men dressed as women were actually real women doing it to your sons. Imagine that. That would be totally unacceptable. And in a school? Anyway, lewd and lascivious is a crime, it's actually a felony. It's defined as a sexual act that is offensive to community standards of decency. It often involves a child. Physical penetration is not necessary. It's a felony. It's a crime, for Christ's sake. Lewd and lascivious, whatever.
Luscivious, we know what you mean.
Thank you, okay? The word means something that is sexually unchaste or lustful. The word lascivious means that... Means something that is sexually arousing or lustful. Again, imagine if these were real women stripping and taking cash tips from your little boys. Because it is offensive sexual desire conduct that is lewd or lascivious battery often involves children. And then, so I want you to write that down, because then I want moral turpitude. Write that down. Crimes involving moral turpitude, okay? What do they say? Attempted lewd acts of a minor. There it is again, lewd and lascivious, okay? Penal Code 2888. Again, I can't stress to you enough, I don't understand why we're here, why we're even debating this issue. I saw the video Project Veritas did, and I saw the little few-minute video that their little drag queens do. It's a striptease! I mean, why is that in our school? Why are we even debating that? Don't you all have something better to do? It's a crime! I would hate for any of you to be held accountable for allowing a crime to take place in our schools. So again, let's all look up moral turpitude and lewd and lascivious acts. That's all I'd like to say, except I'm here to be really tired of having to babysit people, you know? Like, I don't even understand why this is... Why it's even an option for them to be here.
Thank you, Susan. Ms. Cole, you're up, and Joe Upson, you are on deck.
Thank you, Board. First off, I want to thank Marjorie and George for answering the call to run for these seats. You've done great things so far and continue to advocate for the students in this community. I just want to thank you for your service to this district. You both have the highest of integrity, and I can't think of anyone better to fight for our children. And Marjorie, thank you for continuing to stand strong in the face of adversary. Thank you.
Joe and Kathy Arts, you are on deck.
Good evening.
Real quick before you start, these are the last ones we'll look at. Okay.
Last Board meeting, I spoke in opposition of AB 659, and the Board approved the resolution in opposition of AB 659. Two days later, they amended it. So it seems like the Board kinda rushed that, you know, not waiting for the process to go through. It was amended, it no longer involves school-aged kids at all. It's something that's gonna be... Talked about at the college system. Also, last Board meeting, the Board started two new committees, a performance committee and a curriculum committee. I'm hoping that they can find the systems in place to enhance, instead of creating more work for the district office. There's plenty of systems, there were speakers last week that talked about systems that were already there, they reported out on student performance. Maybe we could ask more questions on those to get the facts that we need going forward, instead adding additional layers at this time. It just seems to be redundant in what the district's already doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Kathy and Marlee Martinez, you are on deck.
Hi, my name is Kathy Arts, and I've lived in the Lincoln area since 1987, and it's really great to be here tonight to see so many parents who are standing up for their children and for what's going on in our schools nationwide, and especially here in Western Placer Unified School District. And I'm here to thank Marjorie and for George for standing up for our children, and I know all of you do, but especially just the abuse that I've seen. Just want to let you know that we're watching, even though we haven't been here at every single Board meeting, we are watching. And it's just not me, I mean, I don't know how many hundreds or possibly thousands of people are watching to see what is gonna happen in the school district for our children. I have... I raised my two daughters in Lincoln, and I have four grandchildren that are coming up, and the homeschool movement is growing rapidly, because people are afraid of what is going on in our schools. And I just... I'm here to thank you all for standing up for our children and for what the traditional values and getting back to education, and enough of this social nonsense, so just thank you so very much.
And Marlee, and then Dr. Ken... This is a doctor. Dr. Ken Carm...
Campbell.
Campbell. I really struggle with this, I need to go back. I need... I think I need to go back to school. Sorry. All right, Marlee, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I will be talking for Quest Roads, and then if I have time, I'll be adding my own comments. Hello, this is Quest Roads. I hope that I would never have to come to this, but here we are. The removal of the landing spot from our district can only be described as morally wrong, arrogantly foolish, and frankly disgusting. The district has chosen to remove the LGBTQ support group from Lincoln High School on the grounds of a single fake video from a so-called activist group who is well-known for their edited content and manipulative tactics. I have seen the video and where they claim to expose the landing spot and its founder. However, all I saw were bent truths, irrelevant information, and flat-out lies. At the beginning of their methodically crafted video, project, I don't know, vernous, spliced questions to entirely different answers, altering the message to villainize Casey. Although, they show less edited clips on a barely legal interview later in the conversation, the initial falsified clips were all that were needed to garner the necessary rage from parents who don't even understand the terms used. Furthermore, many of the questions were posed in a way that made it difficult or even impossible to escape a negative answer. This tactic is used... Of using leading questions has been abused by Project Vernatus in the past and has been heavily frowned upon by government officials and media groups alike. In short, Project Vernatus possesses no journalistic ethics and should not be trusted under any circumstance. As a student who is friends, who identify as part of the LGBTQ community, it causes me great pain to see one of the only places where people get to support, get support, and so hastily taken away. Although the removal of the landing spot is extremely concerning, I can't help but ask, what's next? I was never a prominent... But unfortunately, it appears the falsibility has become a reality. First, the Hate U Give, now the landing spot. I fear for what has the potential to be silenced and initially removed next. Thank you. I apologize for my shaky voice. The landing spot's very dear to me, I know Casey myself. He's a great man, and I look up to him very much. I grew up going to drag shows, my mom did, from the age of five, and I still go to them now. They're not sexual, I enjoy them very much, my mom did as well. My grandmas are lesbian, I'm bisexual. The landing spot's been great support in this community, because it's hard to find that. Thank you.
Thank you, Marlee. Dr. Ken and Jolene?
Shay Bog.
What was it?
Shay Bog, yes.
So that is a hard one, yes.
Yeah, I agree.
Jolene, you are on deck. By the way, Dr.
Hi, my name is Ken Campbell, and no doubt, I'm the old geezer here. I've been here forever, and my kids went through the school system in the 90s, and we were very involved with the school at the time then. And quite honestly, I'm retired, I thought I was done with all that, until my daughter was sitting in my office with one of our precious little grandchildren. And my daughter was talking to me, and she was relaying a story about a little girl encouraged by the school that thought, not this school, another school in Northern California, that thought she was a boy, and so they... She was gonna transition, right? And here I'm in the medical field, and let's be honest, you can't change sex, this, I mean, in the medical field, we know that. But, anyway, so anyway, they gave her the hormones and the puberty blockers, and they whacked off her boobs, and then my daughter's telling me about how now she's detransitioning, and she understands now that she's older and she's really a girl. And I looked at my little daughter and my grandchild, and I'm thinking, wow, this is incredible. And then we started talking about this landing spot video, and I knew at that point, I said, I can't let this go. My grandchildren are too precious to me, and they're here and they're gonna be going through the school system. You know, having raised kids, we understand the incredible time, the work, the love, into raising those precious little children. We know that every stage of development, we see them, we know their needs, their wants, their desires, their dreams. The school has a very limited and narrow knowledge and experience with the child, and passing them off to the landing spot for playdates, playdates, and not informing the parents, but instead going around the parents' backs, that is beyond the pale. That is shameful, quite honestly. The school should stick with teaching children how to read, how to write, math, science, etc. Leave the parenting to the parents, and stop trying to destroy that parent-child relationship. Now, when I saw this Project Veritas video, I had to say, I want to know who vetted the landing spot. I want to know who... We want to know who checked them out. Who okayed handing off the child to the landing spot? Someone must have been responsible for that. Someone must have okayed that, and we need to know. We need to know who okayed that. Thank you for your time.
Jolene, you're up, and Chris Baldwin, you are on deck.
Hi, I'm Jolene. I am a mother of three in Lincoln, California. And I have two things. One, I do agree on the landing spot. Just a letter to the parents announcing that they have been seized or paused the relationship. I do think it needs to be taken a step further and investigated as to how it happened. And maybe it is true that the Project Veritas is incorrect, maybe it isn't. But without an investigation, I don't think that the correct information is being provided to the community. And I think everyone in this room should insist that a proper investigation take place to find out, you know, how it happened, if it was correct, how it happened if it was incorrect. And then let's get it corrected so that it is, you know, done correctly. Things are vetted correctly, and we're certain of that, not uncertain. Because right now, there seems to be a bit of uncertainty. And I think if we have that, it would help the community understand what's going on. And also, just to make sure that it doesn't happen again. Because the next, you know, person, if they weren't vetted correctly, could just come in and do a similar thing. But I'd also like to talk about diversity and inclusion in our schools. I like to bring to the attention that I feel not enough are realizing is happening, and that is hypocrisy. Inclusion actually means including everyone. And the most recent example of the book The Hate U Give, which has already proven to be quite controversial, I do not feel we're setting the appropriate example of inclusion and diversity in our community. Inclusion by definition means the act of including or the state of being included. Diversity by definition means the condition of having or being composed of differing elements, variety, especially the inclusion of people of different races, cultures, et cetera, in a group or organization. If we are to be diverse, inclusive, and accepting, then all of our different values need to be considered important. If it's controversial, then it's controversial for a reason. If you consider it to be oppressive to force or coerce, or simply not allow or ban a book when there are parents that want to read it or students that want their, parents that want their students to read it, then it would also be true that it would be oppressive to force the parents and students that don't feel that it's appropriate. And so I feel like a solution where both sides are being included. We need to make sure that everybody is being respected and understood for their views because they have a reason for those views, and it's okay. We should be different. There should be opposing. There should be people on different sides. We have different upbringings. We have different cultures. And as a community, we should be okay and respect and understand each other and come up with a solution that is effective to include everyone. Not to say, oh, you're on this side, and you're on that side, and we're going to be divided, and we're going to be against each other. I think we should get along. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Chris.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Chris Baldwin. I live in Sheridan. I have one child left in school. She's a senior at Lincoln High School. And I'm going to go off topic in a second here. But as it kind of popped up, I'm also a volunteer coach for the Lincoln Shooting Sports Team. And the vetting was pretty rigorous with that. So for the landing spot, I would love to see, you know, to understand what the vetting process was with them. And then again, an investigation, I think, is a great idea as well, to see, you know, what's what and what happened everywhere. I wasn't going to chime in on the book, but generally speaking, I'm not averse to any type of reading, especially reading that gets kids interested in reading a book. With that, I hope the committee will come up with some sort of a program where they split the baby, right? I kind of land on the place where, if you would need permission to show an R-rated film in class or R-rated material from the parents, then if the book qualifies as kind of R-rated material, that seems like a no-brainer to me. So hopefully, we'll be able to, you know, come up with some sort of a process where everybody's notified of what's in the, you know, what's in the program, what's on the reading list, and parents can decide whether they want their kids to read that or not. So as far as barring some trouble, I wanted to talk a little bit about the pandemic and say, you know, as processes and policies and things come up during the pandemic, you know, they never seem to ever get rolled back eventually. So, you know, we made a lot of decisions and closures and lockdowns and things like that based on things that we know now are not true. You know, whether you're talking about vaccines or masks or lockdowns or keeping kids home or distancing or whatever it happens to be. So over the next few weeks or meetings, I'll probably be trying to talk more about getting something like that onto the agenda and really talking about, hey, have we looked at some of the policies and programs and rolled those back? You know, one of them that I can speak to is the free lunch program, right? I don't want to see any students, and as any parent in the district would say, you know, we don't want to see any kids go hungry. That's not the point. But I'm going to guess, knowing statistics, that probably more than 80% of parents in this community could afford something for their, for their kid's lunch, right? So to be able to pull that back. And then on top of that, I happen to note that there's quite a bit of waste in the system right now. A lot of food's going to waste on that side. So I hope it's something that you will eventually take a look at, and hopefully, we'll get a chance to talk about it more in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. All right, so we are at 6.2, which is, that makes it cheaper. Reports, students versus student advisory.
Okay, so there will be, is this on?
Yes.
All right. There will be a farm open house on April 12th, which will be pretty fun. And then our stunt team won against Oakmont and Twelve Bridges High School last week. Clara's not here, can you rub it in her face, but that's okay. JV and Varsity Boys Volleyball took home wins last week against Placer. And about two weeks ago, our lacrosse team had its first win in LHS history, because this is our first year with the lacrosse team. Last week, Peyton Derapentini, a class of 2022 graduate, came back to LHS to talk about her experiences as a student at the U.S. Air Force Academy. And then for upcoming events, prom's coming up in about a month and a week, I think, on May 13th. And then what's also happening in a month, that's not really mine to report because it's happening at Twelve Bridges High School, but I'm going to report it anyways because there's Lincoln High School students in it, including yours truly. So Mamma Mia is happening at Twelve Bridges High School, and it opens on May 4th and is showing through May 13th on Thursdays, Fridays, and Saturdays at 7:00. Except for the closing show on Saturday, the 13th will be a matinee, and it'll be free for mothers because it's the day before Mother's Day. Last week, a lot of students heard about teachers that one I'll be teaching at Lincoln next year. And although they understand that there's not really anything that can be done, I think it's important that you know that this will have a negative impact on students at LHS. And a lot of students were pretty upset to hear about some of the teachers that will be moving to other sites next year. And then, yeah, the last thing I want to touch on, the landing spot. The landing spot was a space where LGBTQ plus kids could go to feel safe and heard and seen and respected and valued. It had a very positive impact on a very vulnerable group of students. LGBTQ plus teens are four times more likely to commit suicide than their peers. And to take this resource away from them is devastating. I'm very disappointed for those students, and I'm afraid for those students, and I'm angry for those students. I believe that this was an indispensable resource, and I believe that it should be brought back to our campus. But until then, or if it never comes back, finding a current solution for students needs to be a top priority in our district. Something needs to be done to replace the resource that's been taken from these students immediately because right now, I don't think LGBTQ students at LHS feel valued. I don't know what the solution is, but something needs to be done to help the students that are suffering because of this. The problem that some parents have is that no one is required to tell them if their kid goes to the landing spot. But that's standard. If you go to a place like the Wellness Center, it's confidential. That's always been the case. And no one is forced to go to the landing spot or the Wellness Center. It's a resource that's available if you need or want it. It doesn't put your kid in danger, but it does create a safe space for the kids that need it. And the bottom line is, kids could die without this resource because this same resource has saved kids' lives. It's saved kids that I've known, that I know, lives. And I just think we need to do something about it.
Thank you, Arielle. Remember, Mr.?
Yes. First off, I had the opportunity to go to Twelve Bridges Art Show, and it was fantastic. It was an entire school full of color and life, and every classroom had art. Gymnasium was full. You would stop, and you'd look at some of the people who did these things, and you'd see their, try to guess who they were, and they're eight- and nine-year-old kids. It was absolutely brilliant. And Twelve Bridges should be very proud of their art program. It's exceptional. Two other quick things. We have a thing called the Academic Excellence Committee. We met for the first time. I'll talk about that a little bit later. But our plan is, and our goal is to improve the academic standards and quality of the school system. Kind of a big goal, but it's something that we certainly want to do. And I think almost all parents are going to be in favor of that. We're going to do our best to do that, and I think we will. And finally, we're both on what's called the Dyslexia Committee. And a number of very good parents had spoken and asked for such a committee for months. And I'm happy to say that we responded. We have a committee, and I think we're going to do a wonderful thing. So there's a, the figure is that 20% of kids have dyslexia, and they haven't, they haven't had the ability to receive proper training in that. I was at William Justice, and they've had two evening programs on it, which were just brilliant. And we'll be reporting more about the Dyslexia Committee and how we're going to test a little bit earlier and give a great deal of help to kids who are going to need that. So thank you.
Thank you, George. Remember, Prophet.
I had lunch at Twelve Bridges High School with our student council member Clara, who's not here tonight. We tried the new chef-inspired menu, the grass-fed beef tacos. They were delicious. Had to go eat again every day. Free food is on excellent. I also had coffee last week with our other four, our student representative here. That was nice. I actually found that we have more in common than we don't have in common. She's an ambitious, highly intelligent young lady. I'm going to college to be a performer. Did I get that right? Yes. And that was an answer, too. I danced in the ballet for 14 years, so it was pretty fun that we have a common ground. Went and watched the Lincoln Elementary Fun Run last week. Yeah, last week. They had a little obstacle courses, so, which was really kind of cool. And they had axe throwing, and then my favorite was the human foosball. The kids were like, foosball. Little things, and they were kicking a ball. It was pretty funny, but I didn't get the flags. I'm broken, as you can see. And like with George, to the Dyslexia Committee, I think we're starting to get somewhere finally. We learned how we're already assessing in the kinder age and the programs being used. So I'm hoping we can improve those programs with some new curriculum, but we'll see as time goes on. What else did we do? Just spent five days in Nashville. Our daughter won a national cheer competition, so that was fun. That was my spring break fling. Had a second Y and N meeting. That was interesting and fun, and I beat everybody in the room at rock, paper, scissors. I was the grand champion. You can see how fantastic it was, and I won a prize. And getting to know the people in the district and the community better, going there and working on little projects together. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Remember, Phil?
Well, last, well, last Monday, the 27th. I took my mom and I, and we went to the open house art show at Twelve Bridges Elementary. And I was actually able to tour not only the art, but taking through fifth-grade classrooms. So that was pretty interesting. I haven't been back to the classrooms in years. But we actually did get to see the science classes, and that was pretty interesting, and they had a lot of science projects out. And then last Saturday, my husband and I drove up to Fallon, Nevada and watched our trap team, our shooting sports team. They currently have eight girls and 26 boys on the team. And so, and just a little fact that I got from the coach was each of our members will shoot 3,250 rounds during, of ammo during the season. They have 44 practices, six tournaments, one state tournament, and one national tournament.
Can I ask, Rachel?
Yes. I just want to throw out a couple dates. Next competition is April 22nd, and that's in Yolo County. The next one is May 6th in Sack Valley, and the other one is May 20th in Sack Valley. You can either contact me, or I can get you in touch with Kevin or Coach Hernandez or Coach Alba. I don't know if he's here tonight. But you could tell him I talked about the trap team, and that's all.
Great, thank you. And those trap tournaments are so much fun. There's something going on every minute. And somebody's shooting, a lot of people are shooting every minute, and some of these shooters are absolutely amazing.
Yeah, and there's scholarships.
Hundred out of a hundred.
There's tons of scholarships available for these teams, yeah.
And fun fact, for gun lovers, those guns run somewhere upwards towards $20,000. Yeah, so not, not, I mean, my daughter shoots trap, but I can't buy $20,000. Thank you, please. Very, very fun. Remember, Kirk?
So Carrie and Emma and myself went to Orlando to the National School Board Association Conference. I mentioned to most of us here that they had asked for us to speak. First, to speak on how Western Placer has used the youth development framework for many years now to help engage young people through teachers by helping them to connect better with young people. I think it's easy to read a PowerPoint, but this thing kind of encourages them to connect with young people in a way that is probably more work for them, but a lot more engaging. So we had a really, I think, great session in which we had 20 or 30 folks. A lot of questions afterwards, like, you know, how did you get a city to agree to come on board with a framework that stretches youth support and development throughout every resource within the community? And so we had some really good conversations. After that, I had done a separate presentation, which was on the third day, and it was first thing in the morning. So I was really hopeful that no one would be there, and I could just sort of wrap up and go early because it was a long couple of days, but it was full. And the topic was how technology is changing the way it's, it's changing everything. And in that, I'll just give you two Cliff Notes. One is ChatGPT-3 was released in November of last year, and five months later, ChatGPT-4 came out, which is just, just a large language model, artificial intelligence that is being backed by huge companies, Microsoft being one of them. And in that five-month time, it now has access to 100 trillion parameters and is 500 times larger than its predecessor of only five months older. And I don't know how to say this in a way that people will hear it, but it's incredibly disruptive technology, incredibly disruptive technology. And then I compare that to the education system in this country that has not changed significantly in 70 years. And I think, wow, how is that going to work out? I have been, I think George is as well, a huge advocate for career technical education because I'll tell you what, CTE programs teach young people that do things with their hands. And it's going to take a very long time for AI to build a house or to, you know, do electrical work or anything else that requires fingers. It'll happen, but it's going to take a lot longer. And a couple of the people came up to me afterwards and had asked, like, so, you know, what can we do? And one of the first things I suggested was, I think, school districts and the administrative level have to bring these skills to their staff. And they have to help their staff see how using artificial intelligence will make their jobs easier so that they'll buy in. And then once they buy in, they can start showing young people how artificial intelligence, which is not something they'll be able to avoid by the time they hit the workforce, how it can be used to leverage better efficiencies. But that requires trust. We have this real issue as adults where, you know, we say things in public forum about young people that their brains aren't developed until their mid-20s, which is probably true, but also a little dismissive. Or we play sound effects on our phones while they're talking. And here's my fear with that. Issues aside, my fear with that is, in a scary world, it sure is nice to have somebody you can trust. Somebody who knows you, who listens to you, pays attention to you, even when you're young and you're still figuring things out. But there's this sort of like, you know, comforting hand on But there's this sort of like, you know, comforting hand on your shoulder so that things that are new and scary don't feel as new and scary. And I don't think we're doing a terribly good job being supportive. While I understand our role here is to educate, people don't learn when they're not safe. They don't learn when they're frightened and there's frightening things, many that have happened, but many that are still going to. And I sure would like to see the same kind of support for some of the members of this board shined upon young people that are doing hard and scary things because I think they need that support. It's very difficult to stand up in front of a group of people that don't agree with you and let your voice shake a bit. And I think that needs to be celebrated. I say in every meeting, I am pro-young people. They're the ones that are going to make sure that this thing all runs when we're too old to get up and do it ourselves. And I do agree with you, Ariana, we have to make sure that there is support for every person and I think that should be a priority for us. What happened with the landing spot was really unfortunate. I get that, but we now have to make sure that there's something in place for those that are vulnerable. And yeah, I think that's all.
Thank you. Okay, so I went to go see the play at Lincoln High School with my husband, all in the timing, all in the timing and Ariana was in it. She was wonderful and at the end, well, I noticed one of the people besides Ariana, one of the actors was one of the young men that spoke at our meeting, our bar meeting on Friday night about the Hate You Give book. And he was very eloquent. I told him he should be a public speaker and we completely disagreed on the book and he ran up to me after the play and we had a great conversation and all of our disagreements didn't matter because he's a wonderful kid and I enjoyed, I just, you know, we have to remember that these are our students and they are wonderful in so many ways above and beyond our disagreements. They are absolutely wonderful. So that was a real joy. I really enjoyed that play. Academic Excellence Committee, we had the first meeting. We talked about what already exists. Joe, to your point, is Joe still here? Joe, to your point, we talked about what already exists and then we asked for some data so we can make decisions on next steps moving forward. So Joe, you must have been with us in spirit in that meeting because we're thinking the same way. So I'd like to address the project Veritas video as well. I was extremely disturbed with what I saw in that video, especially the admonition of lying to the parents, not confidentiality, lying and getting at 12-year-olds for an opportunity for puberty blockers. I do understand that there's an investigation that the district is doing to Donnie's point or I can't guess to Donnie's point and Cliff is going to brief us on that. So I don't know if you guys know this, but last week, a 14-year-old young lady in a neighboring district ran away from home at four o'clock in the morning, entered her high school and hung herself. She was an acquaintance of my daughter's and a best friend to one of my daughter's best friends. They found her at seven o'clock in the morning. I don't know who found her. They didn't say the names, but it is horrible reminder of the mental crisis that our children are suffering right now. Doesn't matter if she was black or white or brown or purple or LGBTQ or straight. She was someone's daughter, probably someone's sister. I agree with Ariana that we need to see, we need to find out now if there is a gap in the LGBTQ community for support and anybody else that needs support. Our children need support and I don't like putting a label on these kids. They are our children. They need our support. They need us to come together to give them this support. So as a district, we need to find out what we can do to Ariana's point to bring some support that is needed to these kids regardless of who they are because they are all, we love them all. They are all precious. They're all perfect and they're all God's children. And that's all we have.
Thank you, April.
Okay. Now we are, sorry, we are at Witta, sorry, George. Start, I hope I have it seen. Okay. BCA? Sorry, no, not here. All right.
All right, I'm just going to hold this. So as you can tell, I'm not Carrie Callahan. She attended the NSBA conference and then is currently on vacation, so I'm filling in for her tonight. Want to get a brief rundown of some of her happenings in the past couple of weeks. As Joe mentioned earlier, AB659 now has nothing to do with K-12 education. So I know that was a concern by some folks about potentially schools requiring the HPV vaccine for eighth graders, so that's no longer a K-12 issue. So as Joe mentioned, that's just an update. The Hate You Give Review Committee that was formed, as we mentioned at the last meeting, had their first meeting last week mainly to ground themselves in our process, the current, we have board policies and administrative regulations that speak exactly to how we handle when parents complain about instructional materials, what the scope of their review is. We have a board policy 1312.2 that details that. We also have other board policies that talk about what we look for when we adopt curriculum. So they kind of grounded themselves in all of those things. All of the members were also asked to read the book to be able to actually speak to the concerns and the issues. So I know they've got another meeting coming up, I think on the 18th when we get back from break. Carrie attended Carl and C. Coppin one day and met with a student who was principal for the day. He was the top fundraiser for a school fundraiser and got to be principal for the day. So I don't know exactly what that entailed. Maybe he got to discipline some kids. That would have been fun, but I don't know exactly. It's probably more of a ceremonial role, but congratulations to that young student for doing that. As was mentioned by Marjorie and some others, Carrie also attended the first community YDAN meeting, which involves not just school district folks, but community members. And I know Carrie's mentioned this a few times, her goal of having a Lincoln Youth Master Plan for all kids and there's definitely some shared interest among community members and community leaders. I don't know how many of you look forward to Carrie's video intros with some of her monthly newsletters, but I know there was a little bit of a hiatus. She recently filmed a new crop that's going to come out in her next April newsletter, so look for that. As George mentioned as well, the Dyslexia Committee met last Monday. Phoenix High, their leadership students recently traveled to Southern California and they do this kind of on an annual basis. They got to go to the Museum of Tolerance, participate in some leadership activities and then of course hit up Disneyland, so I was a little jealous of that. Our elementary and middle school math pilot has been ongoing. It's nearing the final stages. We've had staff input, community input, parent input. The materials are currently up on display on the fourth floor in our lobby, so that's part of the process every time we look at curriculum. So I know curriculum has been a hot topic. The book obviously was a hot topic with English curriculum, so I encourage folks, the books, the math curriculum's still there, it's upstairs. You can come and review all of the materials and go through it. Now math hopefully will be a less controversial subject, but just so you know, it's up there to review. The committee that's been working on piloting and the teachers that have been piloting should be coming in May with a recommendation for the board on what curriculum they're looking forward to implementing next year. And then just to speak a little bit on my doings for all of those who really care about me. So I'm the Assistant Superintendent Personnel and we have in this district a special process that we do each year for any time we have openings. So when teachers either retire or resign or move on, some districts would just post those jobs on Edjoint, on the Internet Job Board. Our district, we do this in-house little program first. So if you're at a school site and a job opens and you're properly credentialed, we allow teachers at the school site to have basically first dibs. So there's some movement at the site level. There's a few rounds. We kind of go until no one makes any moves and then we take all the remaining vacancies to the district and anyone from any site with the right credential can put in for a transfer. So Ariana had mentioned that some of the Lincoln High students were frustrated. This is the fourth and last year where staff from Lincoln High will be going to TBHS or any other secondary school because this is the last year of movement as now we'll have two full high schools with four grade levels. So good thing, this won't be happening anymore. Obviously, the transition's tough. Every year, there are a certain number of teachers based on the increased enrollment of one school and the declining enrollment of another. There's a number of teachers that are identified that we have to lose. They have to transfer and it goes by student interest and student enrollment, so a lot of it goes on what classes students choose. In some cases, if no one opts to go, the least senior member would then be voluntarily transferred, but sometimes we have folks who do have an interest to go. So I know it can feel, I've been a part of this before as a teacher myself. It's a bit of a weird transition. It can feel like some people are either being pressured or you're losing good people or good staff. I don't want to make anyone, you know, feel like the staff that we still have in Lincoln High isn't a great staff, but it is a tough transition and there are some folks that will be going to the other side. I shouldn't say that, it's not the other side, but the other high school. Hope it's not the other side. Going forward in the future, obviously based on the projected growth in this town, you know, Lincoln's going to rebound as well. We're probably not going to have to have this special split little transition fair that we do, but and then I know there were some students that were concerned Lincoln High that reached out to the district and Mr. Mall, the Director of Personnel, went out and spoke to leadership students at Lincoln High just to talk, you know, hear them out and then talk about the process. It is a contractual process that we have, you know, delineated in our contract, so it is something kind of particular and it is unique. Not every district does this type of thing. So I'm happy next year we'll just have the regular site routing and assignment fair and not have to do the high school transition. And then just following that, all of our next year openings for certificated positions are now posted online. So it is a little bit weird to attend job fairs and tell interested candidates, hey, if you're still looking for a job in a month, look online because we have that internal process first, but our stuff's finally out, so. Have a number of great, great people, provide a lot of service for the district who are retiring and then other people who are moving on for other reasons. And then to, April mentioned this a little bit earlier. So the district is currently looking to partner with a third-party assessor to conduct an investigation into, you know, the landing spot and just, you know, one, to determine if there was any impropriety. Obviously, that's a huge concern with some of the things that came out. Obviously, you know, I think a lot of people are concerned at any time when, you know, when someone might be, you know, purposely not being fully truthful with families and parents, especially any adult at school. So I understand why that could be alarming as well. And I think, you know, Ariana spoke to it as well as April. We do have students in need. We do have students that need support. That doesn't mean we can't find, you know, other ways to provide that support. It may not be this organization, but that doesn't mean that the district isn't, you know, doesn't value, you know, the needs of our students. It doesn't value that support. So I don't have an answer right now for that, but I do know that's something that's near and dear to Carrie. You know, she did hear from families who were receiving support from the landing spot and did feel like it was a good support for them. And it was, it was a little different because the students and the parents were both in the know and were involved. So I know there's definitely, you know, there's definitely need and that's something we're going to continue to look at, but obviously with some of those concerns that came out and were made public, I mean, I understand as a parent myself that would, you know, make me take some pause and want to, you know, reevaluate some things. So that's where we're at and that's my report.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you. All right. All right. All right, we are seven, seven, second seven. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item should complete a yellow request to address the Board of Trustees form located at the table, on the table at the entrance of the boardroom. Request forms are to be submitted to the board before each item is discussed. Speakers are limited to three minutes each and the board will limit the total time of public input on each item for to 20 minutes. So 7.2 is approved resolution 222320 for tax and revenue anticipation.
Okay, thank you. This is an item that we bring to the board every year, a tax revenue anticipation note referred to as a TRAN is used as a financing tool to mitigate cash flow deficits. We receive our property taxes from Placerville County two times a year in December and April, but we pay our employees every month and have expenditures every month and so sometimes there can be peaks and valleys of cash flow. And so this is a way of, sort of like I refer to as taking out a line of credit. If we need to use it, we do. If we don't, it sits in the account and earns interest and then we, the agreement is to pay it off at the end of the year, so it is a one-year transaction. Is currently sized at $7.5 million. That's estimated based on the cash flow needs at any point in time during next school year and it may be less than that or more, but it is going to be no more than 8.5 as on the POS, the preliminary official statement says, but they're figuring that it'd be around 7.5. How this works again is that we earn interest in that, on that deposit and then we are charged interest. And we participate in this program when it is either at net zero, it doesn't cost any more than it does to have that money in the account, or we earn a little bit of interest on it. Last year, we did not participate in the program because the interest that was charged was much more than was earned and so we used dry period financing through Placerville County and so that was another way of doing that. So this year, the numbers look a little bit different. The interest rates are going up a little bit right now and so we're looking that we would be able to have a positive cash flow on that transaction. So that is a resolution. There's a continuing disclosure certificate that's attached to the item and then the large, the longest POS that you can read through. It's a draft right now. It hasn't been formalized. They, you do need to have the resolution approved and then we'll go through the process of finalizing the transaction.
Great, thank you. All right, so this is, action, is this a roll call or, okay. All right, any questions?
It should, actually, it should be a roll call. I'm sorry, yes.
It should be a roll call.
So Audrey, this, this is, these are funds that come from the county?
No, it's actually, well,
They're state funds distributed?
They're funds that are, come from investment firms. And then last year it came from the county, their cash. So this, we go out to size the, basically it's like a loan and depending on the rates that we get at the time when we, when we size it, then we lock into those rates and we earn a certain interest rate of holding that in the county treasury and then we pay a certain interest rate on holding, on using those funds.
So you're splitting the difference between the rate that we're being charged and the rate we can earn?
Right.
And then the county pays the interest back to us because it's in the treasury?
Yes, so the money's held in the county treasury and we earn interest from the county So the money's held in the county treasury and we earn interest from the county treasury and then we pay interest on that to the firm that loans us the funds. If you, you have to be very careful with this because you don't want to earn too much interest on on that because we call it arbitrage. Yeah, so we want to make sure that we, yes, I know. So we try and make sure that we're, it's, it's a viable transaction and we're not paying in that, you know, but we don't want to earn too much money because then they can't, they don't want us to do that, so, yeah.
So just because this always fascinates me. So the state promises a budget, but doesn't give it to us right away. So we take out a loan to bridge the time in which it's approved versus the time in which we received it and then they charge us interest.
Right.
And then, but we leave it with the county treasury department to check to pay us, I mean, like, okay.
Yes, it, because we receive property taxes and state aid as a combined funding, that's the majority of funding, and, you know, we all pay our property taxes this month and back in December and those all get deposited in the county and then the county pays us, the districts, school districts, the property taxes. So because property taxes only are paid twice a year, we don't get them every month like state aid, the state amount is portioned every month by a certain percentage, property taxes only come twice a year. So you're receiving a significant portion of your funding only twice a year, yes. So you do, we are, we have to find ways of being able to get through those lean times where our cash may be lower than we're comfortable with, so, yes.
It's not a criticism view, it's a compliment.
No.
It's a ridiculously complicated shell game.
Yes.
So anyway, just thank you for the thoughtfulness of that and.
Thanks.
Yay, governor.
Make me another cheat sheet on that one, too. I need another cheat sheet on that, too.
Okay.
She makes me on my kindergarten paper.
Actually, one page.
She does, she just wants.
Any other questions for Audrey?
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, second.
All right, full call.
Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Freyman?
Yes.
Ms. Proppin?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Dijkstra?
Yes.
And Ms. Stetson? Yes. Thank you. All right, 7.3, approved resolution, I can't even pronounce that, Roe.
Roe.
Roba Ha Ha.
Roe.
All right.
All right, cool. Good evening, everybody. Yes, on, on March 6th, the district issued a request for proposals from our pre-qualified general contractors to submit a percentage fee proposal to provide pre-construction and construction lease, leaseback services for our 12 Bridges High School Port Angeles project to be awarded to the contractor with the highest best value to the district based on qualifications and the price, their price proposal itself. On March 22nd, the district received four proposals from potential lease, leaseback entities and based on their pre-qualification submittals that we received back in February and the qualification statements and their price proposal themselves in their response to the RFP. The district reviewed, scored and ranked the proposing contractors for best value and based on that evaluation, the district has selected Roeblen Contract Incorporated as the lease, leaseback entity to execute the lease, leaseback agreement and perform the services for the, for the project. Attached the lease, leaseback agreement itself for reference and then also the best value scoring sheet. So if there's any questions, I'd be more than willing to answer them. If not, I see you going, so.
I just, oh, I want to turn. Okay. So we own the portables?
Yeah, so they're actually the portables that are in the park in Lincoln High School.
Right. I don't understand how it's a lease, leaseback if we already own them?
So the lease, leaseback instead of, so in your, in your traditional.
It hurts, I really don't understand.
I understand your question.
Okay.
So here's, so here's the difference.
Okay.
So in your traditional design bid build, the architect designs it, the contractor bids it, and then we build it. The disadvantage of that are, you know, if they aren't the best set of drawings in the world, contract opportunistic contractors, not all contractors, we'll see that, they'll bid low in their mind, they got all sorts of change orders coming. And because they're the lowest, you know, if they're responsive and responsible, you have to award it to the lowest bid. So there's the disadvantage and then, of course, you build it. And then you get your change orders and then we have some of the fund that I, that I used to have. The, the lease, leaseback delivery method is we own the property, we basically lease the property where the, where the project's going to be occurring to the contractor. They do the improvements and they basically lease the property back, the improvements back to us via what used to be their, their schedule of value payments, but now we do lease payments after, you know, the, what happened in Fresno Unified back 2015. So that's what kind of created the requirement that we, that we award based on our best value process, which, which we now have, so.
Yeah, and this is a stupid question, but then I would assume the ownership transfers back to us.
Yeah, so the title is always in the district, it's just they do the improvement, they finance the improvement and we pay them via lease payments, so.
Do you want to talk about energy, Johnson?
Yeah.
Yeah, so at this point, we, we went through the process, we pre-qualify all our contractors. We put out the RFP. At this point, we officially bring them on as the entity. They can start pre-construction services, so they'll, they'll start looking at estimating, constructibility reviews. That's where they see, hey, okay, here's an issue, here's a potential change order, you know, let's, you know, they work with the architect now, get it out of the way. And then based, once DSA approves the drawings, they can provide us what they call the guaranteed maximum price. So here's the price to do the project. We'll have a, we'll negotiate a contingency and allowances for the unknowns and those things that, you know, if we get a really good price, we can maybe do some of the things we'd like to do. So in May is when I'll bring back the, the guaranteed maximum price. And at that point, we'll, we'll have the cost, we'll know what we're entering into a construction contract for and we'll do the project as soon as we can.
And, and if the project comes in under budget, then the district gets that money back, correct?
Yeah, so, so.
That's the benefit of a lease and stuff.
That is the benefit. I mean, the guaranteed maximum price technically is the price, but if there's savings, the contractor always gives it back to you.
And typically, you have minimal change orders?
Yeah.
Really? And only change orders would typically be directed by the district. We'd want to do that, that's why you have your allowance, right? It's a way to be able to control the project cost.
And the, the dollar amount's not small, but essentially it's because there's no infrastructure. We're going to, you know, put all of the plumbing and, you know, everything.
Yeah, so obviously, we have the plumbing there, we'll have to bring the plumbing to where the, where the majority of the portables are going to go. There could be quite a bit of grading because we're doing a little bit of anticipation work for that permanent building someday, but.
Can we check the preparatory? It just sounds safe.
You know, I'm not dealing with that ever again. But no, we're, we're good to go. It's on the existing price.
Any other, any more questions?
Maybe smarter than I appreciate.
Okay.
I lost years of my life over those little shrimp.
It's all going to be done by August more, like contact them?
We, that, yes.
That's a lot.
Right now, there's some lead time issues, but we're going to work through those. But classrooms will be, will be operational.
Okay.
And then we'll get a little bit.
Otherwise, all those extra kids are coming your office.
Yeah. All right.
Yeah.
So this is approval, approval of this contract. Do I have a motion?
I have motion to approve.
Okay.
I'll second.
I'll favor that.
It's a considerable cost. Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Dijkstra?
Yes.
Ms. Proppin?
Yes.
Ms. Freyman?
Yes.
And Ms. Stetson?
Yes. Where does a single, or on constable?
There's a roll call required. Yes.
I'll find it. All right. Okay, 7.4, members stipend, and we have one speaker, Joe. And if you're going to yell at someone, this is my item, so you can, right there. Nobody else needs to take in any of the flack, it's all, it's all right.
Okay. Right here.
Go for it.
Reading from Board Policy, by Law 9250, originally adopted 9 of 27, last revised 2 of 15. So the previous boards have done a disservice to all of you guys in not keeping these things up to date. Unfortunately, under, on an annual basis, the board may increase the compensation of members, the limit delineated by ED Code 35120 in the amount not to exceed 5%, which is about $12.80 for you guys. So with that being said, I'm glad that you guys have finally brought this up because it's a long time coming. And on the subject of compensation, I hope this board doesn't go forward with a me-too that's been done in the past. It's such a disservice to the classified staff. When teachers get raises, we're talking about thousands of dollars. When classified get raises, we're talking hundreds of dollars. Classified staff make up this community. There are lots of teachers who live in this community and support this community. The backbone of the school are the classified staff. So I hope going forward, you guys don't continue that, that process.
Thank you.
Thank you and good luck with this.
Yeah, I did a little research on it myself. So Cliff, this is, or this is my item, huh? Oh, okay. So Cliff and I talked about this, so after I brought this up about, hey, maybe we should take a look at our stipends because I know a lot of us are putting in a lot more time, we're going a lot more places. I think this board is very active and getting more active, which is great. And, and so I did a little bit of research and I, there is, and I don't, I don't know the, the state mandate.
He mentioned it.
He mentioned it, that one?
3512.
That does limit us because we're under $10,240 a month, so I don't think we could go over that. Nope. But Cliff has a little bit of information on the budget.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not promoting any.
Nope.
Just giving information. So you asked us to look at how we, how we fare competitively. So April found the ED Code, so because we're less than 10,000 student ADA, ED Code doesn't limit you to 240 a month if you attend a meeting. So, so I think that might have been the initial idea, it was maybe a little more, but that's, in statute, limited. What some boards do, some boards, well, so 240 plus, you have the option to pay in to be part of our benefits package, but it be at your own expense. There are some districts whose boards actually get benefits as well or benefits in lieu of pay, so there's different, different options. So of our kind of surrounding districts and competitive districts, there are two that actually have pay and benefits. One is Roseville Joint Unified, so they're, they get 240 plus, they can opt into the district pay benefits plan at the district expense, but you can't have anything, you get the same amount the employees get, you can't have anything greater than what the employees get. There's another local district, they, they only get paid the 180 because they're a smaller district and they have benefits. So there's two locally that do, the rest do not. The rest are like us where you can opt in. The only other, the only thing I would, I would caution is if this is something you're considering, obviously, these types of things could potentially have an effect at the table when we're negotiating. We, we try to be obviously competitive with our, with our comparison districts. Sometimes we're number one in certain categories, oftentimes we're right in the middle, that's kind of where we shoot, we obviously don't want to be at the bottom. Right now, you're basically number two of all our comparison districts in terms of board compensation. So if this were something you were interested in, obviously, that could you tie for first and that potentially could, could come back to the table with our labor unions who also now want to be first and.
They want to talk about our $240 a month.
That's what I said.
I don't, I'm just saying, it's just something to, something to consider. So that, that is a, a potential option. The, the other thing I would, I would caution against is with our classified employees, they receive prorated benefits. So if they're less than a full-time employee, they only get a certain amount towards that benefit. So that potentially could be a conflict if, if, you know, classified employees who aren't full-time employees can't even get the full amount of benefits, but the board takes the full amount of benefits. That could put us in a situation where the classified union. So there might be more to discuss on this, I don't know if this is moving in.
No.
Well, I don't think anything proposed, so it's just information.
No, this is a suggestion.
So that, that would be something to, just to consider, how do we provide benefits to certificated employees, how is it different for classified? And then if you were to propose something, what would you be proposing, what would you think, think about?
Well, how would it work if a board member's term expires, then the benefits, they would expire as well, correct? Or are they able to continue paying and?
No, they, those would end. Yeah.
So it's the dental plan, that's why.
I mean, so dental's part of the plan. So, so the current max plan for full-time employees, the district contributes $1,201.99 toward the plan, so it's about $14,000 per year. $14,000, $14,240? So that is the best benefits package of all of our comparison districts. So of our plans, of our plans, Kaiser, Lacrosse and the others, you know, you would pick the one that you wanted and we would contribute up to that amount and you would be responsible for any difference unless you picked a plan that was fully covered.
So that's the information.
Tell me if we can have the money by.
No, it's good.
Are you, do we, do you guys have any more questions or want to discuss it or?
Other than if anybody wants benefits or something, we can't get them, can't get higher pay for it though.
Did anyone want to discuss the benefits?
Well, what did you say about the benefits?
Well, I already am covered.
I know.
Twice and so it's not anything that I would opt in for personally, but that's just my situation.
I've covered twice. I've covered two.
I mean, I think the only thing for me is, you know, sometimes there are, I don't know, it's like, it determines who.
Who's upon the floor.
Yeah, I don't know, I, I don't know. To me, it's just like, it is, it's, it's a shockingly thankless, terrible job. I mean, you guys know. Good Lord, I mean, it's, it's, yeah, so I mean, I, I think any incentive, not maybe for us, but for who might run next is, you know, there, I also think a little bit about, you know, how we, we have, I don't know, we have a lot of people in, in Sun City that don't ever contemplate doing this and I wonder if some sort of incentive, I mean, I agree this really serves anybody here.
But we could set that something, future people.
Yeah, I mean, it is expensive, that's a lot of money.
That's very expensive. Yeah, it's very, I'd rather, for me, I'd rather see that money go to the kids and to the facilities.
Yeah, no, I disagree with you.
Is there any other type of creative incentives or, I mean, besides, you know? No, no, I don't know. Parking spaces, I don't know. I mean, it's.
Get out of the box now.
I know, I know, I know. But I mean, what you were saying is, yeah, it is.
How about like continued education?
I'll go back, I'll go back to kindergarten.
You know, you have to pay for teachers to make that.
No, we pay, you know, teachers. Anyway. What was that?
I mean, I don't know what, okay, follow up when you're teaching both in your.
Yeah, we feed you every once in a while.
Every once in a while, that's true. Although George is hungry today. He's like, what would you do for me later? No, I agree, $1,200, that's too big an ask.
Yeah, I agree.
That's a lot of money, $1,200. So we do pay for conferences and all of those tricks.
That is true.
Why was my flight a no?
Nobody wanted to go, to be honest. It was, it was kind of one of those things that I didn't hear anybody going like, I just go.
I don't remember the ask, but that doesn't mean what this. Okay, well, thank you, thanks for the introduction.
Good enough.
I think it's, I think it was a good discussion to have, just so you know. And I'm glad we're all in here.
And if 10,000 students, it only goes up to $400, so it's not.
Well, will be that two years?
Yes. Yeah, that's true. So you lifted up two, okay. All right, well, thank you, thank you for discussing that and thank you for helping us assess through the information, Cliff. Okay, seven point five. Approved board representatives to district community committees.
All right, so. So the board had mentioned, you know, interest in some of these committees. We have some members that have already identified interest. So we've already agreed, discussed and agreed upon the board reps for the academic excellence and board policies committees. We have on the board item representatives already listed for some of the other committees. So some of these already have one or two members and remember, two would be the max. The curriculum advisor committee, those members have yet to be determined. So one of your tasks is, besides the curriculum advisor committee, are we good with as is, with who's on the existing committees? Or is there any changes there that people want to discuss? And then the second thing would be the curriculum advisor committee. Yeah, who would potentially be interested in certain.
So. Can you, can you remind me what the two by two committee is? And when that starts?
It's the city.
Right.
Yes.
Right.
I don't know what it says.
Okay, because I'm looking at, I'm looking at the committees and who is on how many committees? And so I see that Christie, you are on one committee with me.
Yeah, the FARM.
They're just the FARM foundation. And so that only meets twice a year. So that's a very low demand committee. The two by two hasn't started. So I don't know if that's a high demand or low demand. The library committee.
It's quarterly, right? Yeah, it's quarterly. I'm not sure why we haven't had one. We probably should have one.
City schedules, those may have set me anything.
Okay, yeah, so pretty low, okay.
Yeah, it's four times a year.
The white hand seems to be a pretty high demand committee. Would you say, Marjorie? The dyslexia committee is probably becoming, gonna be a high demand committee.
It's once every other week until we, through the summer.
That is, that's considered a high.
Oh, okay.
Pretty frequent.
Pretty high. The wellness committee, what is that?
Once, once, twice a year?
It's a student wellness committee.
Okay.
Three times at the most a year.
Yeah. Okay, and then the education foundation committee? What is, how often is that?
It's every.
Is it monthly?
Okay, so that one's monthly. Okay. All right. You are. Marjorie and George. Yeah, Marjorie, you are on five committees right now.
Education foundation committee. I haven't even gotten invited to anything without.
Those were from the December meeting when everyone, you guys first started. So I might need to reach out to them and let them know.
So is this like a once a year, twice?
Maybe monthly.
So what do we.
They might not be getting invited. They might still be meeting.
I thought that, maybe I thought that was related to what's worked on.
No, we just join these committees. They aren't board committees. We're just sort of, we're member, we're board members.
Representatives. We just, we just. Okay, that's fine.
The educational foundation is a separate organization. And they, they provide grants to our employees.
Oh, yeah.
It's a foundation, and so they do meet monthly. And so they have board representatives on them monthly.
Oh, that's fine.
Yeah. Well, and maybe they don't have their emails because when April and I joined the FARM committee the first year, we weren't getting the emails either because they didn't have our updated emails.
We just need to have final, who's on once a year.
Okay, yeah, that's inside of them. Yeah, okay. So if everyone can take a look and see what committees they're on and gauge, gauge your availability before we talk about the curriculum committee.
We can have several members on that though, right?
No more than two.
No more than two.
No, that's a quorum. I'm sorry.
No.
I know that answer.
Yeah, so just as far as balance, a member profits on five committees. Number Daxtra, two, three, four that I can see. Number Freeman, just the one. President Sose, two, three. Is that the one I knew of? Okay, number West, President Price. One, two, three, four. So, yeah. There's the balance of our.
Okay. So who would want to? So I would like to be on the current one. Can I, I'll just throw one, mine on there.
And I would too, since I'm.
And Christie would.
That's okay.
And Marjorie?
You know I want, that's okay.
Are we, are, I mean, this would work like any other committee. We would, the two would, oh, the two would. Jason's not jumping up on the table during another committee.
Come on, Jason.
Uh, no, I think Christie needs.
So is the board, is the board okay with Christie and myself on this committee?
I think it's great, yeah.
Yeah. I think it's an interesting one for me too because I'm on the academic excellence committee. So I'm hoping to. Right? Are you good, Christie? Are you good? Jason?
Yeah.
All right. Then we'll be, let's do your own.
Okay, so I think, I think we have to.
Vote?
Motion approved the members for those three additional committees.
Yeah, it's not a roll call, but.
No. So the academic excellence board policies.
Does that get you where you want to be, Christie? Or is there something else that you feel like you want to order?
Yeah, gives me one and a half.
Yeah, is there somewhere else you want to be? I mean.
No, this is fine. Do you want to do the education foundation? I'll do that one. I just haven't had it done yet.
No. Do you want to be on the FARM foundation for me? Oh, wait, there is one. I am. I love that one.
Well, I haven't participated in that one. So if you wanted to do that one.
Is there anybody else who wants to switch theirs since we're talking about it?
You're saying he's more obligation. She wants for the education foundation.
No, I think, I think I heard her say no. I heard, I heard no in that no.
I heard it too.
All right, okay, so we have to, so, so we have on these three, the academic excellence, myself and George. For board policies, we have Jason and Marjorie. And for curriculum, we have Christie and April. So we need a motion to approve those.
Motion to approve.
I second. All in favor of that? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? All right. Thank you. All right. Okay, future agenda items. Does anyone have future agenda items?
So there's one public comment.
Oh. Oh, do I have it? I'm sorry, still.
Sorry.
Don't listen to one.
Oh, wait, is this on, oh, for future agenda? Okay, good. The question's good, I'm sorry. Come on up.
Can you hear me? Okay, perfect. So I was just writing because I didn't really know how the board was going to go tonight. I'm highly pleased on what I'm hearing tonight with the committees. It makes me, my heart pitter patter to see the people that are on the curriculum makes me feel like we stand a chance out here. There's a reason why I gave the compliments to Placer County and Roseville and I think Sacramento's struggling so much. Jason, I agree with some of the things that you've said. Mental health is huge. Okay, I want to clarify. Nobody on this side believes that the LGBT community should not be given mental health. Okay, so I think that for future reference and future board, we need to come up with a way to make sure that everybody has the mental health that they need and have the resources that they need. Okay, because it seems to me as, as an outsider that's not in the school system currently, that it appears as if only the LGBT community is struggling with mental health. And that's not the case. I mean, you heard today April's emotional reading. I mean, I, as a parent, could not imagine my son or daughter going and committing suicide because of the not feeling supported. Okay, that is, me as a parent, I am not, I'm not oblivious to what's going on. And that's why I'm trying to ring the bell on this, that it is a lot more people suffering from mental illness than just a small percentage of our community. Okay, so what I would like for the future agenda is if we're going to be talking about bringing back something to campus to address mental health, obviously, this young girl, she understands what the students want. Okay, the students clearly feel like they need help. I support that as a taxpayer. I fully support that. So what I would like to see in the future agenda would be what we can do to draw out some sort of way for everybody at the school to have access to mental health and to have a safe place where they can go. Okay, so that's what I would like to see the board provide us in the future agenda. Not something that's just simply protecting a one specific group because what that starts to cause is ostracization and separation. You have people that don't feel like they can, if they're not supporting it, you have other kids telling you, you know, you're a bigot or whatever. So the most important thing is that all children on campus feel safe. That involves Christians, Muslims, Jews, blacks, Mexicans, immigrants, everybody. Okay, so what I would like to see this board do is propose something in the future that will address the crazy amount of mental illness that this country is suffering from. And I want to let you guys know that I support that. I believe that children need support. And I want to reiterate to this student advisor, I completely support your community and getting their mental health. I fully support that. I don't agree with the lifestyle choices, but I fully support access to mental health and having access to support. So that's what I wanted to reiterate. I wanted to bring that up. And I hope that future agenda, we can come up with some sort of conclusion that's going to make everybody happy and everyone feel like they're being addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeffrey. All right, so do we have some, anyone have future agenda items?
I think that's it, right?
Yeah, yeah, so. So I have a couple. Do you want to, Marjorie, did you have something?
No, but I was, we have the health and wellness center at Lincoln High School. And we do have counselors and there are one the county pays for and then one we pay for. I haven't reached out to them recently, but I mean, I would hope that we could get them to be the ones to find the proper resources for outsourcing what the students need. I don't know if they've done that yet.
So as an agenda item, have we had the wellness, I can't remember. I'm sorry. Have we had the wellness center already present to us? Can we please, as a future agenda item, have the wellness center at both or address us what they're doing at Lincoln High School, what they're doing at Glenn Edwards? And I think there's, is there going to be one opening up at Twelve Bridges as well? Is that what we're?
Not at this point.
Not at this point, okay. So we could have that presentation in the future and then future, and then probably soon, sooner than later, a discussion of some support that now we seem, we are likely missing now at Lincoln High School with the current situation. That one, and then I thought that Mr. Baldwin brought up a good topic that I actually hadn't, I mean, I think about it all the time and probably a lot of us do, but some lessons learned from the pandemic. Maybe we could just have a discussion on that as, as Carrie and her cabinet and the board. I think that's a really good one to go back and talk about because, not saying that anyone in the district or board or any, anyone made mistakes, but there were things that were thrust upon us that, and things that happened during that time that maybe we should talk about and just hash out of maybe things that we learn from. What are you going to speak about before I ask?
I'm going to stay with.
You don't understand us, okay. So there were lots of, well, we could certainly discuss things that happened at board meetings about things that happened with, with dynamics between board, the audiences, you know, candid conversations on that, things that happened at the schools as far as maybe how, how some things were handled with masking and non-masking and, and how, how we finally got a mask, both in the manner of candy and things that maybe just tossed, talked bluntly up, yeah.
I would think that would be more like a town hall thing. We would do that at board meeting and talk about our, unless you want to like put something up that, of policy changes made to accommodate the pandemic maybe that you'd want to reverse, but to have a group discussion like we did on our Saturday one about how things were. I don't know.
I don't know what a town hall, I don't, I'm not sure a town hall would be different than a board meeting if there's more than two of us.
I don't know how we would do.
So, so the way I understand our responsibility is to meet, confer, provide direction and vote on items in which we have purview. And I'm, I'm struggling to find how things that happened in the past and having a conversation about those in an agenda's board meeting are governance. I mean, it's not like we're, we're making a decision that is similar to one that occurred during pandemic times. So that's why I'm, I'm just trying to figure out like, okay, the conversation could be a workshop, which I think maybe is different than a board meeting where we would be discussing. Because I don't disagree that having some conversation about, there are certain things that we had to do, deal with in closed session that aren't going to be able to be discussed in a public forum. So that all has to kind of get separated. But I'm trying to figure out how us as a governance body having a conversation without any specific action or purpose is, is within our purview.
One of the.
I don't know if that answers.
I'm not sure what the next huge problem is coming down the road.
You never know.
But if there, if we can glean some ability to look toward that and not duplicate a mistake we might have made in the past.
Oh, yeah.
I'm not sure if that's even possible.
I love the postmortem for sure. I'm trying to figure out how it fits into, oh, do we not say that? That's, you know, when it goes bad at work, you're like, all right, let's get together and talk about what, how that will, right? I'm trying to figure out.
We talk about celebrating failure.
Oh, no, I like that, I like that. And I don't certainly want to forget the, but I know we signed a resolution that is still in effect and we're not going to exclude. So that's.
Yeah, and I think maybe you're right. It should be a governance thing. Maybe it's that how we govern or, I don't know, just, I just thought, I always like the lessons learned recap. Maybe it's been too long, maybe we're not the right board. I thought I drove up.
I think a workshop is probably a better forum for like, because then we could get presentations from, you know.
How about this? How about this? If the, if the board is okay with that, if Jason and, and you would trust Jason and I to talk more about it with Carrie and company?
Sure.
And see maybe, you know, because I do, I do like the lessons learned idea that Chris brought up, of it's always good to maybe hone in or bring, or bring it back and say, we talked about it. It's always good to maybe hum in, or maybe we'll just bring it back and say we talked about it, we just, we don't know. But I think maybe at least talk about it with Carrie and company, is everyone okay with that? And then we'll come back.
I would just add, of the things that you have control over, or the board have control over, is that there are things that the board couldn't control. I know there was disagreement between the public and some of those things, because some of those things were handed down, were legal, there was argument over, you know, is the emergency mandate law and all that stuff. But as far as certain things that were passed down, you had to comply. So some of those, I don't know.
Not that stuff, yeah.
But I think one in particular that stands out is just how we handle these meetings. I would say the Friday special meeting, you handled it very well. If we would have handled some of those meetings like that last year, probably would have gone a lot differently. So that's one of the, like, that's an easy lesson right there. What else? I don't know, talk ahead.
I think there could be other things. I think when there were, when there were parents that were gathered outside of schools, I know a couple of us went and visited, maybe some didn't, what, you know, how to handle stuff like that in the future, I'm not sure. I mean, I learned a lot of things by going out there, but maybe we talk about that as a group of what that looks like to the board. What do you think? I mean, go, 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 let's go back. And then we'll come back. Because I do want to just consider that. If we come back from nothing, then at least we've considered it. Okay, all right, so if it's not an agenda item, it's just a, we'll talk to, you know, something that Jason and I will meet with Carrie on.
Okay, and then I'll talk to Carrie about the other items, figure out where and go or encounter that makes sense to them, put those in. Obviously the support discussion sooner than later.
Yes, yes, please.
April, Friday, something real quick to that. So Carrie.
Yep, about ten seconds. You don't have a yellow slip, Chris, so go ahead.
So the idea that I was coming from that were, a lot of students, a lot of parents' rights were, I'll just say that, right, trample on, right? And I think a lot of parents find the local school board as kind of their last defense to, you know, kind of tyrannical state and federal governments on that side. So what I'm talking about is you guys looking at what you, what you can do to stand up and push back instead of just automatically taking that and saying, oh, well, if we don't do this, they're going to withhold our funding, or the state's going to sue us, or our lawyer said not to do, you know. It's either that or I think Gus, who's not here right now, has a point in that there needs to be some sort of parents' rights group that's standing up and pushing back against, you know, against those kind of tyrannical momentums.
Thank you, Chris. Thanks for, thanks for clarifying. Okay, anything else? Okay, upcoming meeting, April eighteenth at Scott Lehman Elementary. At six thirty for open session, five o'clock for closed session, or for the start of the meeting and close session. All right, and with that, we are adjourned.